Next on the agenda is the approval of this, the December 2021 financial report. Is there a motion? Through approve?
So I'm over.
You all look at them. And we're out.
Well, okay.
I got to use the.
Okay, well.
If it's too long ago.
Okay, moving right along. Jeff Rowe, Ralph, and Biggertelli on the water. Project.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. We just wanted to share with you the results of the, the water and sewer rate studies on the prepared. And I wanted to introduce you to Amber Nielsen and April Goodson. And they worked on, on the reports here tonight. So I'm going to have Amber kind of walk us through the results of the report. And is that possible?
So I'm going to start with the water report. So on the green line, you'll see it says over municipal water utilities. We'll put there, both of these, as you know, as Jeff said, is just your across the board standard rate study. They're both set up the same way. So I'm going to walk through water with you in a little more detail to tell you how our process, you know, how it's set up. And then sewer will just kind of go a little bit quicker to, you know, what you really want to hear the bread and butter of it. So I'll just walk you through, so starting on page two. So pages two and three are really just some high level indicators of the water utilities. The score is all financial. So we don't worry throwing a ton of numbers. We kind of just like to hit the highlights and then you'll see on page three, we love to include graphs. And I know someone said they love seeing the graph, so I like graphs too. So that is good news. But really the high points, and so before I go into the high points, we looked at calendar year 2019, calendar year 2020, and then a test year, so the 12 months ended August 31st, 2021. So this is just kind of summarizes financials. A high point year is the water utility has seen kind of an upward trend in cash. And looking at, you know, the detail, that's kind of an increase in metered sales. So that is, that is really good news. So that has led to the water utility having higher operating receipts than they do operating dispersments. So that's going to lead to an increase, an upward trend in your net operating revenue year over year. So good signs here. We also included just some, you know, like a day's cash on hand, which means how many days if all revenue stopped tomorrow, could the water utility operate if you're just, you know, digging into your cash reserves? You've got 372, 372 days for 2019, 426 for 2020, and 522 days for our test year, which, you know, that's over a year, so that's really good news. So then on page three, just kind of summarizing all of those trends. You can see in the first graph on the top left, this is just comparing your, the utility's total receipts to total dispersments. And then that green line balances. So again, you'll see an upward trend and you can see the teal color versus the dark blue. Receipts have been outpacing dispersments. So again, good news. The other graph to the top right, that again is just comparing total operating receipts to total operating dispersments. Again, receipts are higher than dispersments. That is a good thing. Bottom left, those are just cash balances split in between each of water's funds. So the yellow, the largest fund is the operating fund. That's, you know, what's paying for the salaries, chemicals, whatever. And then you've got your other funds, like your sinking fund and your reserve fund, which are related to your, the water utility's outstanding bonds, meter deposit, and then just a tiny construction fund left with leftover construction dollars. And then the bottom right, that's just kind of, you know, based on the 12 months ended August 31st. We looked at your operating dispersments. How are those kind of split up? As you can see here, the largest category of that the water utility paid is personnel, which includes, you know, salaries, employee benefits, followed by debt service, which are your bond payments. And then you've got, you know, following materials and supplies, contractual services, so on and so forth. So those two pages just give you like a snapshot. Yes, do you have a question?
The lower left, what's the $247 at the top of each of those?
Yep, that is just leftover like $247 in the construction fund, which is likely from the 2015.
Okay, so that's why it's equal in each of those categories.
Yep.
Thank you.
Another question, just to the test year that you ran is from September 1st, 20?
2020.
To August 31st, 2021?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, so then going on to page four, what this is, is fund balances with the minimum balances required. So when you guys issued the 2015 bonds, you entered into a bond ordinance, which, you know, was full of promises such as keeping two months, at least two months of your operating budget sitting in cash reserves in your operation and maintenance fund, making monthly bond and interest transfers to pay those bond payments semi-annually, debt service reserve fund, you know, holding a certain amount in there. So essentially what we're just doing is looking at the fund balances as of 31st to what they should be at August 31st. Overall, everything checked out. Karen, there was, it feels like there was just a slight decrease or negative variance for the debt service reserve fund at 831. And I've been meaning to check with you to, just to see if that was a good timing issue or something with maybe transfers. Okay, okay, I'll follow up with you after. But overall, in the variance column, you can see the total is about $250,000. So what that means there is the water utility has $250,000 more in excess cash than you legally, you know, should. So that is good news. That's another good thing. And below, we kind of go through how we calculated those minimum required balances that we show in the middle column up top.
When, when you said legally should, you mean legally need to?
Yes, yes.
Yep, and just one, one other thing to point out on the schedule to, this is not a requirement of your bond ordinance, but we'd be assumed in here that within an improvement fund, that you establish an improvement fund, and that's for like future capital type items or projects. What we, it's sort of best practice, we recommend that you keep at least one year's worth of what you expect to spend for capital. So like in annual capital allowance, that's a $171,000 figure that you see there. So it's not necessarily a requirement, but it's just kind of industry best practice. And so that is included in the minimum, minimum reserve requirements there. So that stands above and beyond the, you know, the 249,000 total variance that you have. So again, good, good, strong cash position with the water utilities.
And that 171, that's a good point, they said. That 171 comes from a page that we'll get to later, so kind of hold that thought. So moving on to page five, this is just an amortization schedule of the water utilities 2015 bonds. And, you know, I'm sure you've seen this plenty of times, but just a reminder, these bonds mature at the end of 2035. So got a, got a little bit more to go on them, but this amortization schedule will play into our analysis of the rates in a couple of pages. I'm moving on to page six. So this is where, on page four, I said, remember that 171,000? This is where that just comes from. So essentially what this is, is we go through Karen and Bob about, you know, what are the plans or maybe even just slightly anticipated capital improvements for 2022 through 2026? So this is really what you'll, and you'll see this in a couple of pages. This is kind of what's driving rates or capital improvements for the water utility. So we have a list here, you know, we've got South Main Extension, Loop Academy Road and Fleet Parkway, meter reading software, and then we did include some, just some like allowance to build up funds for future tank painting. We also assumed that, and this was with discussion with Karen, so your plans might have changed since then. We also assumed that your ARP money would be used for the Fleet Parkway project. So that is an assumption we have built in here. You know, that's changed, we can always remove it, providing we use schedules and that's over. But anyways, so what we did was we listed out all of the capital improvements you'll see from 2022 to 2026. We divided that by five years after we told everything. And that brings you to the very bottom number, the 171, almost 172,000. So that's going to be included in a couple of pages when we analyze the rates, and that's the number you saw a couple of pages ago.
One other comment I'd add to that. We'll probably get to this on a couple of schedules here, but you see in 2022, pretty significant level of capital, so $757,000 is the change. And even if you, you know, apply your ARP money, $329,000, that still leaves a balance of $427,000 that would, would have to, to come from somewhere, right? So if, if we go back to the previous schedule, you know, we would assume that it would come just out of the water utility. We go back to the previous schedule, you'll see the, the total variance there of, you know, cash that we talked about above and beyond those minimum reserve requirements, which is 250,000. So, you know, we're kind of comparing those two numbers, there would be a shortfall there. So something for the council to think about is, you know, should we, if, if those projects, well, I, I think the first question would be, can we delay some of those projects? Or phase some of those projects into, to later years? If the answer is yes, then from a cash flow standpoint, assuming, get to this in a minute, if rates are adjusted, the cash flow goes over top. Just wouldn't have the ability to cash flow those right now. The other alternative would be to look at other funds within the town, maybe ART, or maybe other funds that you may have available. ECD or whatever other funds you, that are eligible uses of those funds that could be used for those projects. So just kind of wanted to highlight that, that's obviously a higher than normal year for the utility. So there may be a timing issue that we have to deal with.
Well, it would make sense to stretch them out if we could. Yes, I'm right.
Is, is all the big breakway worth water with the new quarter?
It's just water.
It's just water. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be, you know, that would be the, sort of the idea of just if you're able to spread. We didn't know how pressing those needs were, you know, if it was something needed to be done, but yeah, if you can spread it out, then.
Well, you've given us a worst case scenario.
Yep.
That's fine.
Moving on to page seven, so once we, you know, looked at this, the balance was gathered capital information, then kind of what we did was scrub our test year's operating dispersments. And why we do this is to look for, you know, maybe capital, huge capital items hidden in operating, maybe our timing is off, so maybe, you know, purchase power, NIPs, go payments. There was only 11 when there should be 12. So we kind of scrub it, make adjustments where we need to. So this is kind of what this page starts. So you'll see in the first column, the test year ended August 31st. Those were the actual operating dispersments for that 12-month period. The next column are the adjustments we made. So we only made some adjustments to salaries and wages, employee benefits, and then contractual services, and I'll get to those in a minute. That brings us to kind of in our adjusted operating dispersments. Then we apply a conservative 3% inflationary factor. And then that brings us to the bottom pro forma annual cash operating dispersment of about 340,000. And then that's what we're going to use as your annual operating dispersment when we analyze the rates in a couple of pages. So the next two pages are just those adjustments we made kind of in detail. I won't read them to you, but essentially, you know, for salaries and wages and employee benefits, we took information from Karen, your salary ordinance, we assumed 2022 raises for certain employees, kind of calculated all that, and then we came to those adjustments. And then employee benefits, bike and purple just calculated based on our calculated salaries. And then on page nine, we took a, almost three-year average of your contractual services dispersments just to, because they were a little bit up and down, so we just want to be conservative there and make sure, you know, we're a factor, factor for just like an average. And that, you know, translated to about 5,200 adjustment up. So then the next page, page 10, so this is kind of where you see the results. So this rolls up everything, debt service, the 340,000 operating dispersment we calculated in your capital. So the first half of the page are the revenue requirements. So you'll first see that 340,000 operation and maintenance dispersments. We throw in some additional utility receipt tax based on the below calculated rate increase. Your debt service, which comes straight from a couple of pages ago. The 171,000, again, that is kind of what's driving the rates here. And I know we talked, you know, can we delay some, so we'll get back to that. All of that rolls up into what is the utility's total annual revenue requirements? And we do back out interest income and then the annual CRC commitment. That brought us to the water utility needs 572,000 annually to operate. So then we compare that to, well, what are your annual receipts? We compared it to the test year's metered sales, penalties, air protection. And essentially that rolled down to the line that reads additional receipts required of 137,100. Does everyone see that one? So that essentially points to us, a rate increase is needed. But if you compare that 137,000 to the 171 capital, annual capital, you can tell the rate increase is pretty much driven by the capital schedule. So if we assume everything on that capital schedule is as is, you know, keep the assumption of the ARP money, that translates into the third number from the bottom, or fourth number from the bottom, a 31.5% rate increase, which translates to, for an average 4,000, you know, residential home who uses 4,000 gallons a month, that's about an increase of $11 a month. The second bottom, or second number from the bottom, that would bring, you know, on the residential user, 4,000 gallons. My rate would be about 4681 with that increase. And you'll see to the left, it is currently 3560. Any questions on this page? Anyone want to add? Okay. So then page 11 is just comparing what are your present rates compared to what would the proposed rates be if you decided to move forward with that 31 and a half rate increase? So, you know, everything is the same here, based on your rate ordinance, we're just applying that rate increase.
It was the last rate increase.
260.
It might have been a conjunction with the contract. We did a couple of projects. Eighteen or 1%. I don't recall off button.
We did phase it in over, what, 18 months? Was it three years?
Yeah.
I thought, I thought it was sort of.
It took a while. The last, it's 2015, 2016.
Yeah, we can send that over too.
Yes.
If he's like, I have that for comparison purposes.
Oh, that's good. Percentage of things.
Right, right, I just don't want people to think we're making a profit.
No. Before the 2014 one, we brought up.
And I don't know how you calculated the, one of the capital projects, or maybe your capital projects is the extension on South Main Street, which is assuming that there's going to be increased utilization and for more users. I don't know how, if that, that offsets any of this or how it factors into, into that.
Yeah, unless you have, you know, customers that are wanting to get to know that they are connecting or have connectivity, we don't, you know.
Certainly, if you have more connections and additional, that'll have offset some of the short line of it for. I guess it's a question of when and how many additional customers that.
Well, I would think that's what cash balance, you know, back really in the is increased because back when we did this Maple Ridge wasn't on. That's 32 houses, I mean, we've added some properties. So that holds true, you know, going forward. And we add properties, you know, that'll just help our situation.
Right, I, I just wondered, and I don't know how you would calculate it, I agree with you, it's just.
Oh, you can't.
You can't without, considering the occupancies.
Yeah, you can't, right.
But I would think adding additional users down the road would even factor in, but it would be, reduce that 31.5%.
Yes, once, once it connect and they're up and running for a year. You know, if you're talking about if it's residential?
Yes, yeah, yes.
So I, I don't know how many homes you're looking at or considering.
There's a combination, Tamrec is also commercial. And the.
It's hard to say at this time.
Yeah.
We just don't know.
I mean, we know, well.
We know Tamrec.
We know the tentative plans for Tamrec.
We don't know the, you know.
Right, it's going to be wash base for, for our class.
Right.
A photo roll, so anyway.
So to give it, this is just sort of a context to that. Let's say there's 50 homes, you know, on an annual basis, that's $21,000. So, yeah, a good amount. It could reduce that percentage, but, you know, wouldn't, not necessarily move the dial entirely, obviously, but it wouldn't sort of.
The growth will be good.
Anytime you can add growth and rooftops.
Thank you.
It's a good thing, yeah. It's a good thing.
Okay.
At least for utilities.
Right.
All right, so the last page is its report is a graph. Essentially, this is just a useful one. It compares nearby, new, that's similar size to Culver. Those are in the teal. We have a state average here, and these are all based on 3,000 gallons, a residential user. So we have a state average of 3364 in the dark blue. And then we've got Culver's rates in yellow. So the first yellow of 3560 is the current rate. And then the one furthest to the right is the proposed rate if you did apply that 31 and a half percent increase. And just to show you where Culver was trying to fall.
Karen, do you know how many users, or you know how many users we actually have? Connections?
It's approximately 850 connections and 1,150 meters.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, any other questions on water or are we ready for sewer?
Ready for sewer.
Great, so I'll go through the first half of this a little bit quicker. So looking at pages two and three, again, you're going to see the same type of information as we did in water. Again, from 2019 through our test year, we are seeing an upward trend in cash reserves, so that is good. However, on the flip side, opposite from sewer, over those years, there was a slight decrease in revenues. And when talking with Karen, it sounds like it was something to do with the Academy's storm sewer system, them fixing it. And then, so you had less runoff into the sewer.
Yes, between that and then the shore was something.
Yeah, yeah.
That boosted revenue for a little bit.
Okay. Right. Um, still, you know, when we're calculating days cash on hand ratio for this sewer utility, in 2020, you know, the end of the first year of the pandemic, you know, you still had enough cash on hand to last for over a year. So that is good news. And then on page three, same thing, same kind of chart here. You thought your receipts, even with that decrease in receipts, like, you know, me and Karen just said, receipts still outpaced dispersments in all three of the years. And you did still see an upward trend in cash balances, so that is good news. The bottom left, again, the operating fund is the largest fund of the sewer utility. And you can see that increase in the yellow from 2019 through August 31st, 2021. We also have the sinking and reserve funds in there for the outstanding sewer bonds. And then the bottom right, you've got that kind of pie chart there showing dispersments for the test year ended August 31st. Again, personnel, which are salaries and wages and employee benefits, and debt service, just like water, are the largest categories for sewer utility. Moving on to page four. Again, the total variance in the far right column is a positive 316,000. So that is a, that's great news. And that even, just like Jeff had talked about in water, for that kind of like improvement fund recommended reserve for sewer, you'll see in a couple of pages, we have that as 265,000. But even with that assumption, you guys are still positive 316,000. So again, really good news. Continuing on to pages five and eight, six, these are sewers outstanding bonds. And both of them, one is, the first one from 2005 is paid off at the end of 2023. So that's coming up pretty quickly. And then the one on page six is already paid off, is paid off October 1st, 2021. But since our report is based on August 31st, we do still have that in there. So sewer only has one outstanding bond and it's falling off pretty quickly. And that kind of note, we did rolling through our analysis in a couple of pages, so we'll get to that in a minute. Page seven, again, this is kind of, you know, the list that Karen helped us put together for 2022 through 2026. You know, digester blowers, rebuild final clarifier, everything kind of going down the line here. All of this rolled up into an average annual capital improvement amount of 265,000. Any questions on this page? So again, pages eight, nine, and 10, we scrubbed through operating dispersments again. Made similar adjustments, as we did in water, to salaries and wages and employee benefits. That's just based on salary ordinance and information from Karen. And then materials and supplies, we contracted service. We did another three-year average, just to be conservative. We applied a 3% inflation again, so that brings you all the way down to the operating dispersments we used in our rate analysis, and that's the 528,000 at the bottom of the page. I'm going to skip past nine and 10, since those are just the explanation of the investments. And we'll go right to page 11. So again, this is set up just like water. You've got the first half, your revenue requirements, but different from water. We showed two columns here, so we showed the first column with your 2005 bonds that you still have outstanding that fall off the end of 2023. So as. that fall off the end of twenty twenty three. So as of today, you're still making those bond payments. So what's the rate increase there? And then we also, the column to the right, we, um, we took that out. So we said, you know, if this was, you know, January, whatever, twenty twenty four, what would that look like? So just going down the line, we brought in that five hundred and twenty eight thousand from a couple of pages ago for, um, operating dispersments. In the left column, we have the three hundred and one thousand of annual debt service. We pulled in that two hundred and sixty five thousand from the capital page, compared all of that to the annual collection and treatment revenues and penalties. That brings us to, for the left column, so with the two thousand and five bonds, additional receipts required of two hundred and fifty six thousand. So since that's positive, that means a rate increase is needed. However, if you look in the right hand hand column, assuming no bond payments, it's negative forty five thousand, which means you don't need a rate increase. So in the left column, if you move forward with the rate increase needed as of today, that's about thirty one point two, which is almost the same as water, thirty one and a half. That bumps up the average residential bill for a thousand gallons by about eleven, almost twelve dollars, eleven ninety, and puts the monthly rate for that at fifty oh five, which currently it's thirty eight fifteen. And then, of course, in the right column, you know, if you didn't move forward with the rate increase, the rate stayed the same.
I can stand to that and a couple of takeaways. Obviously, the 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 big variable here is the, well, not variable, but the bonds that are rolling off, uh, in just a couple of years. Similar to water, we have the large driver here, and the central rate adjustment is the capital, so ten and fifty five thousand dollars per year. It's really what's driving that need for thirty one percent increase. If, again, I think the question goes back to how pressing are those capital projects? And can some of those projects be moved down to to other years? So under the current rate structure, the the utility could afford, um, roughly ten thousand dollars or so-ish, ten, eleven thousand dollars per year for capital. And that's what the rates could support. Um, anything above that would then eat into your cash balances, which which you have good help in cash balances. So that's not necessarily a bad thing, uh, as long as it's, it doesn't continue, right? If it's just for a a year, a year or two, um, you know, without, again, depending on what the level, how much you spend above and beyond that ten thousand, um, just knowing that that's that's eating into your cash. But you you could certainly absorb, you know, some, uh, cash decrease without jeopardizing your your cash position. So that that that's really, I think, what it comes down to is, um, can you afford to to delay some of those capital projects for for helping to minimize the amount of capital that you spent those next couple of years?
Question. Where's the east side store quotes?
That is, go ahead.
It is, it's included, um, in the collection and treatment revenues, so the eight hundred and fifteen thousand. And we confirmed with Karen that that number included a full year of their revenue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
On the sewer capital, um, well, on both water and sewer capital for South Main Street, the water looks like we're, um, projecting a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years. But on the sewer, it looks like the half a million dollars is all lumped into, um, twenty twenty six.
Yeah, and I I it depends on if also if redevelopment ends up um, doing an agreement with the developer to support that. So I don't know what the town's part would be versus redevelopment, does an agreement with the developer paying for the utilities. So I I think that's just a rough estimate of if we end up putting it.
But it would not, we don't think it would grow until twenty twenty six versus the way the water is going?
Uh, no, I would say sooner. Although this depends on how long it takes that development to go on, but we would have the utilities in before he would have it built out.
I mean, I would suspect we'd put in the water and sewer mines, and we have that torn up and and doing that work both at the same time. Um, so I just wonder about the five hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty six for sewer, if that should be.
Yeah, I think it was based also on an estimate that Bob had with Midwestern a while back when we were looking at the obligation to take a few weeks out.
And I'm not questioning the amount, it's just the way it's ever done.
Yeah, and keep in mind, too, that some of the recent developments have taken place after that started, after all of this has started. So, you know, there's
Right.
There's been a lot of additions and moving pieces that aren't necessarily calculated in there because we get no data.
Good point, though, on the, because on the water, like when you said, when you said we're showing a hundred thousand a year. I mean, is that realistic? Are you actually going to do a hundred thousand a year? Or would that be, you know, just do it all at once, right? Whatever year that is. So, uh, what we're showing here, I don't know, they are not too realistic, personally, it can be annually hundreds.
If it was going to be done out once later, then I would set aside.
You decide, right.
Yeah.
But if if we had the capital to set aside, I mean, in your study, you're saying that basically we don't have the captain to fund that annual amount um, that's needed, at least on the water side.
Yeah, you 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 don't, uh, well, you 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 don't in twenty twenty two because of the Loop Academy project and the new reading software. Um, but beyond that, you would.
You're okay. Yeah.
You have that one stump year, twenty twenty two, where there's there's several large projects that that kind of go beyond what's your current cash position.
And I would say if redevelopment is going to end up contributing to development, it would be most likely going to stop. And in fact, it's not likely to be these other water project that we have.
Okay. And then pages eleven and twelve, eleven, again, this sewer did apply a thirty one point two percent increase. How does that shake out the rates? And then page thirteen is the graph again. So the first yellow is over the present rate. And then the one for this to the right, the other one is with that thirty one point two.
Yeah, sewer rates, uh, a little low average. And water rates maybe just a tad of average to other seventy five.
You have the same history on the rate of justice, the sewer and water, did we just go at the same time? Not the same percentage, but.
Right.
Fourteen through sixteen.
Yeah, I think sewer was a lower percentage and water was the higher. Because that's been so long. Well, in water, in water, we are doing those great projects.
Yeah, we have the water tower and we have the water plant.
Is this, is this, uh, position versus comparable communities, uh, changed over time? Or is it always been this gap just being above, for example?
Yeah, it's kind of on the water side.
Yeah, yeah, the same way with this sort of thing.
Yeah, it's kind of always evolving, you know, because other folks, they do projects and and adjust rates that that line, that that line, that average always changes. Uh, but on the sewer side, I would say you've been below average probably for most of the years, for a long time. On the water side, I think you you were probably, I'm speculating here, but knowing that we had a pretty large increase last time, we're probably below, and then that with that increase, it's what you just about.
So it's kind of reactionary type of thing, always changing. Oh, we're buying, we need to get up higher and even closer to the norm. And so everyone's kind of.
Yeah, it's it's always a moving target. Um, and a lot of it is is not necessarily, I mean, I'll just keep it up to use about the rates, but it's it's but it's driven by need, working on like projects, if you have an aging, you may have really low rates. You know, in other cities, they have really low rates, but it could be because they haven't updated their their system in twenty years.
They've been thirty hours.
Okay. Put it off. So it can be a little bit misleading, you know, and looking and looking at those rate comparisons because every utility is is unique in terms of where they're at and and doing the necessary upgrades.
Two thousand and fourteen, when we got, before we did the projects, we were low, stay average rise. But we hadn't had any increases, but we had a fifty year old plant or whatever age the plant was.
It just depends where in the cycle you are, I mean, just a snap that.
Yeah.
I get it.
The sewer balance is heft, is heftier now because of that pumping all period on the East Shore Conservancy. We were able to add good balances to that fund.
They also bought and passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, that certainly, that certainly helped.
Didn't hurt.
Remind a little bit of a windfall.
Right. Okay, any other questions?
Is this, is this a, uh, something we should have a workshop on or?
Right, we, I mean, yeah, we're not going to.
As a result of.
I appreciate the them being here tonight.
Yes.
But we got to study it and we can do a workshop.
They need to vote on it, that's for sure.
No, no, no.
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not, we're not going to. No, it's not, no, no.
Yeah, once you have a chance to, you know, discuss it.
Digest it.
Digest it. You know, if there's more questions that come out of out of that, just let us know. And if and when you do make a decision on whether you do want to adjust rates, I would assume be more likely on the water side. But maybe sewer, um, just let us know, we can work with Jen, Jen, put together some coordinates.
And the, with the bonds falling off, you don't look like you need much of an increase on sewer. Then again, I, and our sewer plant's been upgraded in pretty good shape. I guess it'd be interesting to know the impact of the, or as they have now sort of gotten rid of the pumping off.
Right, right.
All that we had, looked at that.
And we had, at one point, we had Midwestern assessed our capacity, um, because we thought we were doing a development on the north end of town that never did occur. But now that we have one south end of town, it's going to impact that capacity probably quite a bit. It it's over a hundred residential units between housing apartments, et cetera. So we probably will have to look at capacity as part of that discussion because with those two housing projects potentially happening in the next couple of years, we'll probably get pretty close to the numbers. I mean, Bob and.
The improvement of the Loop Academy Road and Fleet Parkway, what is that accomplishing?
There's water pressure issues in that neighborhood that, um, we wanted to fix to start.
Oh, you have a water deficiency up there?
Yeah, basically, very, very low.
That's fine. That's that's a one word.
Simple answer, simple answer.
Simple answer.
Came up at this.
I understand it.
Don't water your lawn.
I understand. Thank you so much.
It only came up this particular time because of the trail going down that railroad quarter. Um, we want to take care of the utility problem before we put the trail in, so.
So just a half a million dollars I wanted to know. You know, sometimes it's talking big money every, every now and then.
Beg your tell you, thank you very much for the, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome to stay around for the rest of the meeting or.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
You know, but, um, if I, in my day.
Sure.
One of the items under my quick report was the state's effort or the legislature's effort to reduce the reduce our state. The property tax.
Personal property, personal property tax.
And Jeff has been, actually, several presentations.
Oh, good.
On it and is knowledgeable and can probably explain it much better than I can.
Are we paying you for this explanation?
You know, if we need to, we will, but.
So let's say a freebie, how about that? So I know there's a re- resolution that may be considered tonight.
I was going to, they are doing.
Reviewing.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so this is a evolving, uh, topic, right? And I mean, that's being discussed down at the state level, but and this is not new. I mean, legislature's been talking about elimination of business personal property tax for for many years, but it it seemed to have, um, more steam this year. And, uh, so, you know, the the original proposals and what we were hearing was either partial elimination or or full elimination of business personal property tax. Um, I think that stance has softened a little bit. The bill that came out of the house didn't reflect that, now and said it, I think it said it, sort of taking their time and considering that. But nonetheless, what if something passes, it may not be, you know, commercial elimination or full elimination, but there there may be something passed which could, you know, affect, uh, business personal property tax. And and what that would likely affect in in any one of those iterations would be a reduction in the assessed valuation that's attributed to business personal property taxes. So, you know, if we think in a very broadly, at a high level, you know, how might that impact the town of Culver or the county or all the other black community that's in the county? Um, and the way it could impact is that you have, you know, whenever you think about the relationship of assessed valuation, that's that's made up of real estate and it's made up of personal property. Um, so if we take a part of that assessed valuation in personal property and we're reducing it somehow, some way, whatever's asked or proposed, that lowers the overall sales. And what that has effective doing then is, you know, if we still need to generate X number of dollars and our assessed value goes down, then what that does is it drives tax rates up. So again, this is, I'm I'm generalizing here, but, um, what what it could impact or result in is an increase in, uh, tax rates. The, uh, the the next trickle down effect, if you will, is if your tax rates are going up, then everyone's aware of the circuit breaker, we've got the tax caps in place. So as tax, as tax rates go up, then that can result in an increase in taxability or increase in circuit breaker losses to work with. So in in a nutshell, that that's kind of, um, what we would be looking at if the state doesn't somehow replace that revenue with with another source of state. So, you know, we've been working with counties and municipalities and trying to estimate, you know, what does that look like? What's the impact? What are the potential losses to, since it's on Culver, what losses to the county? And we're seeing, you know, mixed results, and it really comes down to, in any case, there's there's, there tends to be a loss. We're going to lose revenue. Question is, how much revenue? And the question is, um, you know, that is, what does that mean to the individual taxpayers? And how are the individual taxpayers being? So if if circuit breaker losses increase and we all in the county, the overlapping unit is sharing that, right? So even if Culver, when your percentage of personal property, assessed valuation is personal property, isn't that high? Maybe the county is, or maybe, you know, the the school system, or maybe the other cities or towns, maybe they do have quite a bit of personal property. If that's eliminated, that means their tax rates go up, which means if the county tax rates go up, our tax rates here go up, right? Because we paid it with the county. So everyone kind of shares in that, in that loss, if you will, even if, even if the town, for instance, doesn't have a lot of personal businesses. Is that applicable to that? The other thing we're learning about that, we've. The other thing we're learning about that, we've learned is as we've looked at potential financial impacts, when you you really drill down and you look at the, how the individual property, properties may be impacted by the individual taxpayers. What we're finding is you are currently below the cap. So let's say a home that's a hundred thousand dollars. Fairly low value, a lower value of home. You're likely, and it depends on what county you're in and what district, but you're likely below those caps. So if the tax rate goes up, you're not, you're not already at the cap, so your, your, your tax bill is probably gonna go up as a result of the elimination of business personal property tax. If you are, if you have a home that has a much higher value, let's just say five hundred thousand dollar home and you are already at the cap or close to the cap, then taxes go up, you're not gonna, you're not gonna see a tax. So you're not gonna be impacted, you actually might see, might see a decrease. So if you were just below the cap and now you're at the cap, you might actually see a reduction. The other takeaway is what we're saying is for smaller businesses, commercial businesses, they would likely see a, a tax increase as well as a result of this because they're generally not quite at the cap because they have a higher circuit breaker threshold. So those are some of the takeaways that we're seeing and, and I'm not sure that legislators understand and maybe fully understand some of the unintended consequences of, of that and who, at the end of the day, is gonna actually pick up the tab. Because it's not, you know, it's not a question of, you know, can we survive on less revenue? We know that it takes a finite amount of revenue to, to, to provide these services. It really comes down to a question of who's paying it then. And so who's paying it, making up that difference would likely be those lower home value properties and small businesses. Now, when we're talking about larger manufacturing and industry, which is really, I think, what this, this is really targeted at, to bring in larger industry businesses. You might get, you would likely get mixed results from that too, because if you are a large business, maybe you don't have a lot of personal property. And tax rates go up, so you know what, you're gonna pay more taxes every year because of that, because you're not gonna get the full benefit of the reduction in personal property tax. Now, if you are a large company that does have a lot of personal property, then you would likely see that, that tax benefit there. However, that's only if we're looking at, it, it also depends on the age of your personal property because this really gets into weeds, but if you work through the business for personal property tax system, there are certain depreciation schedules that you provide. There's a lot that goes into it. But depending on how, you know, how you, how, how you are impacted as a manufacturing company, to the extent you're impacted, really depend on the age of your personal property and also the, the amount of personal property. So it's not a blanket, okay, everyone's getting C, this, every company's gonna see this reduction in their taxes, it's just not, it's just not that.
Jeff, why would they need to legislate this if there's already abatements on business property, on personal business property? Like you can abate that already at the local level. Is it their way of making control away from the local level? Or, I mean, I don't, maybe that's too simple.
I, I don't know if it's, if it's that intentional, but certainly you're right, because, you know, abatements are one of the real thing tools you have in your tool belt to help negotiate, bring in new business.
Yeah, we're already doing that more than you.
Kind of already doing that and maybe this is the pessimist in me, or maybe looking at your glass half empty, but part of me feels like some of this is, is sort of a political feather in the camp. You know, people are taxes, we're reducing taxes because I mean, as, as you guys probably know, you know, Indiana is already at the very top of the states as far as being business friendly and business personal property tax friendly. Very competitive, it's not one of these. So I'm, I'm on my soapbox now, but, you know, to me, you know, if, if, you know, the, the problem is not the main problem is not finding more businesses to come. Great, that's great, right, we can attract more businesses. And I come from Elkhorn County, so I see wanted signs every day as I drive down the road. Problem is not jobs, we have the jobs.
Workers.
It's the workers, you know, it's how do we attract and retain workers? And again, is that trickle stem? How do we, how do we maintain workforce housing, right? Because that's the other issue, are we, where are we gonna house these people, these folks, these workers? In, you know, all the place, you know, all these other things that really go towards attracting businesses other than just taxes, which is just. So I got, I kind of got off on a tangent there, but that, that's kind of what's being discussed now. As I mentioned, what came out of the house was ten and two, and what that is proposing is a is a, I didn't remember my notes, so I'm looking off memory here, but it's not a, a partial elimination or complete elimination. It's a reduction, I believe, or elimination of the thirty percent floor that, that is currently in place for. So once you get to a certain appreciation of, after say year eight, then you're, you're at a, a thirty percent floor essentially, that's what you, you pay. So that, that's kind of what they're focusing on right now is not a, you know, complete elimination or partial elimination. It's kind of messing with the, with the floor, thirty percent floor that's in place. And there's another Senate bill out there that, that looks at, you know, maybe reducing that floor from thirty percent to twenty five percent, it's like five percent. You know, those aren't gonna have, well, and that's just for future investment. So the, the current bills, as I understand them, are not retroactive to the equipment that's already, already in place, it would be for future investments after January one of twenty twenty two. So it's more prospective, you know, future investments. But there's a lot of things that still come in play because you have TIF, TIF areas would be affected. It would, and again, it depends on how much personal property is, is in that assessed value. But, you know, not only, you know, a lot of TIF is in debt, so you have that as a concern essential to not have one, you know, but also you know, one of the benefits of TIF, as you very well know, is to build that area, to grow that area so that when that TIF area expires, then that assessed value rolls into all the rest of the assessed valuation. Tax rates, but if that goes away, then you don't do that as much of that.
Well, if the TIF area could be heavily affected, maybe not Culver say, but city or whatever, are they going to put something in place to help make up for that lost revenue? Because a lot of those TIFs have bonds and, you know, if, if, if they're expiring as it is or you find a city or county tap out on their TIF money, that can be a real issue if they don't, you know, extend the TIF five years to do something that would counteract that.
Yeah, yeah.
It just seems really back half.
You're right, good, yeah, and, and I know that Aine and others have really, that's why they've really pushed replace, it's been, going to do something like that and you need to come up with a mechanism to replace that, something like that.
This is just January of the session and you've got two months to go and it's to be continued. It's gonna change so many times between now and the end of the session. Sure session.
There's not a.
But it's still to be continued since we're still yakking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. It'll come out in the eleventh hour. Right.
When you say that they could come up with another tool, are we, so like you have eat it and low it and deal with all of those that we came up with? But we're starting out with these, these ones to fill with wisdom, I think, but we're not using the other one. But essentially, you're just finding the money somewhere else anyway from the same class. You're still taxing people, kind of like, use one of those tools, there's a gap somewhere.
Right. It's gotta come from someone, the, the questions, who is it coming from? And but, you know, something that I heard earlier on when, when they were talking about full, partial or full elimination was maybe instead of eliminating business personal property tax, was, you know, maybe reducing income tax. Tax and then there still would be some trickle down effect because municipalities still receive some of that, those income tax dollars from the state. A lot of that burden is probably falling on, on the states that go over the unit. So I know some things like that have been, have been thought about. But, but yeah, I mean, unless they're, if, if they do do something, unless there is some sort of replacement, it's gonna be, it's gonna be challenging.
We're not gonna follow this tonight.
Yeah, thank you though.
Yeah, I mean, sure, yeah.
Yeah, education.
It is very educational. And thank you all, and if you wanna stay, that's fine, you all.
Yeah, get out.
Head back to ours.
Well, thank you.
We appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Did a good job on the reports. Okay. Moving on. Second and third reading ordinance, twenty twenty two days, zero, zero, one, unsafe building. So we're gonna wait two weeks to see if anybody had any questions and wanted to further discuss it.
Okay. I called Jeanette about it and it was the makeup of the
Committee.
Of the, of the committee.
Yeah.
And there was a question of originally it said the former building commissioner or his, his or her staff or his, does he maybe a member? And I think there was some question that I asked Jeanette, she suggested putting neither the Culver building commissioner nor his, his or her staff. Because that was running into the issue that we had previously, the building commissioner serving as an enforcement. So I just wanted to let you know that that.
The language will change, the neither, neither or. With that additional language in there, neither or the building commissioner. Is there a motion to approve on second or third reading?
I have a question.
Go ahead. Jenny, did you find that grammatical error in that?
Oh, yeah.
I think it's the first paragraph.
Well, what I saw was in regard to said amending. And I think it should be in part to amending this ordinance. But you may have also saw that, that unsafe building, but is that what you were looking at?
I think there was another right in the first sentence of the.
Ordinance providing for inspection, repair and removal of unsafe building and unsafe premises with on a Culver State of Indiana.
No, it's, it's okay.
Yeah, I, I didn't like the said.
Right.
Another point of information on this, with that amendment, do we have to go back and who first time and second time or is it?
You proved it on first reading and it's such a, you know, scribbler's kind of a correction, I don't, I mean, there's no change really of the impact of what's going on, I I don't think you can go back and.
Okay.
So is there a motion on the floor to approve on second reading? The change of Karen had read about having the building commissioner or his staff. Second, motion been made by Bill Ham, second by Rich. To make those changes on second reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Motion carries. Rules and approve on third reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Bill Levinger, second by Bill Ham to suspend the rules and approve on third reading, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're safe.
Thanks.
Yeah. Next, we have I H C D A agreement.
This was the agreement that we put in front of the last time that would allow residents to go by for utility relief. Karen's reviewed it at this point and talked to somebody about it, right? Yeah, I had a, and then I reached out to the number of cities and towns who have
similar.
Have signed up for the program and they had a. It, it is provided a way for someone to get their.
So you suggested we approve the agreement as presented?
And, and the requirements on you and, and our staff, or not all the rest, or?
I don't think so.
Okay, that was concerned, okay.
Yeah, really the main was that if, if we had a show off violation or something like that and they pay the bill, you have to turn it, have to get it turned on within three days, which we're usually the same day.
Is there a motion on the floor to approve the I H C D A agreement?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Levinger, seconded by Sally to approve the I H C D A agreement as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the M C E D C and Visitor Center contract.
I had already given you guys copies of these a couple of times, read the modifications to both contracts in the last meeting. I then sent them to the Visitor Center board chair Tracy Fox and also M C E D C president Laura Walls. Laura contacted me today, maybe she could be at our meeting, but she tends to be at the next meeting and asked if we could table that one. But I think the Visitor Center is fine with what we wrote into their agreement, so vote to sign either or agreement, I will then send it on as a signed copy to those boards, but Laura did ask that you guys put it on M C E D C's on next agenda.
What's the council's wishes? That.
Differ on the.
M C E D C.
Yeah.
And is there a motion to approve the Visitor Center contract? Tonight?
Some move.
Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Ham to approve the Visitor Center contract tonight and to wait Laura Walls to be here next time to talk about M C E D C, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Council appointed the redevelopment commission, did you get? You got Tony's? So you, you got it.
I got it.
Okay, everybody's got. So the council needs to, there are a motion from council to appoint Tony Mayfield to redevelopment commission. Um. I have a question, are are does the date for submitting? Are you over with? Uh, it goes to the thirty-first. You want to wait till next time or you do it tonight? You had any other?
Next council meeting is still fall before the next C R C meeting.
Okay. Well, then, let's just wait till next council meeting then.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't make any difference.
I mean, somebody. Somebody and points well taken.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just wait and act on that at the February meeting, okay?
Yeah.
Good, town manager's report.
Okay. I'm gonna skip over this as posed up. Lake Max Phase Three. Meeting with N dot on site, Bob and I did and then yeah, each door for catch part one because there was. And basically went over the preliminary site plan with all their campaigns. This whole phase of the trail is on their property because you guys recall the shortening the length of the trail from a structural standpoint. So, um, the next step will be we have to wait to the environmental stuff gets approved and then we move into right of way slash acquisition. And since that's an end up process, we have to follow even if the town donated right away. Um, the good news is that because there's funds in that line item and every end up budget, we'll be able to move those funds to another line items. Expected comes up, construction or the bid comes out higher than we expect, we'll have that available. Um, so that meeting went well and the next step too is that we'll plan a public input session to mainly be inviting the academy to take a closer look at the final design and giving their input. Um, I'm still waiting on the the agreement for the utility easement, which is not so much related to this. Eventually they'll have that trail easement as well, but um, Jim and I have reviewed that thing in the item, there's a map, there's a legal description, it's all uh, Saint Jefferson Street Trail Project, this is going along with Lake Max Phase Three from a schedule standpoint with N dot. So Macon suggested that when we go to bid, we bundle these two projects. Um, I may have mentioned that at the last meeting, but that's a good thing for us. It's another construction bid. Um, the water project proposal for Midwestern on the northern account, once we get the utility agreement, we'll get them to work. Um, Bob and I originally thought we needed to really get that taken care of quickly, but for Phase Three of Lake Max out to construction and apply in twenty twenty-four, so we have a little more time than we expected. They sometimes will move around that letting date depending on what their schedules are. Uh, the peerless proposal for the new well, um, I probably have told you we got D data street survey back. Um, the one thing that we need to have done on that survey though is a legal description and line drawn for where we meet the permanent easement. So we sent that to territorial and asked them to add that to the survey, they've agreed to do that. Uh, I should put that back really quickly from them. And then, um, we'll also have this recorded and I'm gonna send a copy to Jim because we're gonna have to work out a permanent easement agreement with Wade McGee. Um, the good news is is we've had a couple of meetings to wait about this and he also involved the developer of his property in those conversations and both of them feel like this will not be an issue.
That's good. That is good.
Uh, don't have the survey yet for the alley behind Ohio Street, but now that territorial's done with data street, we should see that one coming. Uh, they have notified residents along there that they were putting stakes out, you've probably even seen some of those stakes, so that survey should be completed. Um, B S engineering proposal. Uh, Chris Weiner, Bob and I met at late last week and they're working on plans for this segment of Lake Shore Drive and they showed us the engineering site plan for that with some different options uh, that Bob gave feedback on and gave his preferences, which were also their recommendation. Uh, so we were all kind of on the same page on how to handle that project. Chris will be giving me some information to do for the crossings grant. Um, I think we told you guys earlier that he was gonna submit that grant, but we've since sort of looked at how to do community crossings and you can either bundle all of your projects in the one application or you can do separate projects. Uh, and Bob and I want to submit all of our road segments as one and then submit this one as a second, because once you commit to a list, I expect you to do all of them. This involves engineering, it's gonna be a more expensive project, so you want to keep them separate in case you decide not to do it in the same year. Uh, and that's logistics thing that we don't really need to know about. Anyway, um, Park Department, we're still waiting to get awarded the Starred Prime Beach Lodge Building, uh, you guys already approved of fixing that drainage issue with the contractor, but weather is sort of care of it right now, but hopefully we'll do it on the others here. Uh, under my updates, um, I started listing comprehensive plan here. As you know, we're gonna undertake this in twenty twenty-two, reached out to Macon. Because they have people who are certified planners and they've been known to help communities do thought plans. And since we wanted to do this one internally, um, Karen and I had budgeted a more than an amount of money for a comp plan. I think last time we paid fifty thousand to have one done.
Yeah.
Yep.
Uh, we'll confirm whatever that number is, but I I talked with Macon about how they could potentially help us and and my biggest concern is having expert planners at the table. I have some background on comp planning from my trade group days, but there's always things you're not thinking about. To boot, we're redoing the zoning ordinance right now and the hand commission has quite a few changes they want to make in in the zoning board, which is also not necessarily our expertise, so I gave Macon a heads up about that. Macon is particularly good at collecting data and surveying and ensuring that you've got that behind your comp planning, so, um, I kind of went through the things that I would think we're gonna help with and they're gonna submit a proposal to the town to do that for. Um, certainly I expect that to come in a much lower cost than what we would see during consulting to do the comp plan. And I did tell them I would serve as primary author on the plan and do a lot of the writing, but with their aid on these services, I think it'll make for a better process. So once I get that from Macon, I'll forward that to you guys to review in the next meeting, sure. Um, and the Crossroads Culver team will be a strong resource when we get through that process as well. Information, I explained that bridge to James Zad. Uh, C R C's approval of getting appraisals, I don't have those in yet, but I'm happy to share that information once. Um, and let the C R C determine what we want to do. The crossings grant. Um, we are underway with this process, we do on Friday, so don't expect to see much of me tomorrow because I'll probably have a worship. Um, but, uh, we do have N V's of lists and have estimates for the road segments that we want to do and a brochure letter that agrees on that. A broadband task force, uh, we were supposed to meet with a consultant before this meeting, um, but he has first, so February second is the new date that we're gonna meet with him. And, um, hopefully get a R F P out quickly. And then I shared with you, um, one, I think the Crossroads Culver team, there's several people working on different areas of this. Um, and I expect that team will help us with the ready green application process. But in the meantime, leadership capacity building, subcommittee, what I've noted here, um, we are looking to form a student group that might serve as like an advisory group to the town council, also to other organizations as well. Um, Karen Schuman has engaged with a faculty member at the school who is bringing students to our meetings and we are meeting when they can meet, so breakfast and lunch meetings primarily. Uh, but these young people are very excited to potentially be an advisory group to all of you. And at the county crossroads team level, we are also developing a list of students in the communities as well as leaders. Marshall County Crossroads Team asked for coming up with because we can gather might be interested in mentoring, um, or establishing a program for, um, letting young people shadow some views. So if you guys are interested in doing that, let me know and I'll put you on the list. If you know any young people who would be interested, whether they're high school or college age, um, we're gonna work with the schools, but uh, it doesn't mean a young professional could be one of the mentors. So we're still working out logistics on that because we want to involve some of the high school students that, you know, who've got parental permissions and that sort of stuff to work out. But we're also not just looking at municipal leaders, we're looking for nonprofit leaders, corporate leaders, et cetera. Um, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know locally what was going on too because we may come present before the town council get an approval from the board, get more structured and for that. Um, Marshall County Crossroads Team in addition to what I was just talking about, uh, a team has formed for the ready grant application process, I'll represent Culver on that. Um, Marty Esteban will also be involved with facilitating some of the meetings. The Crossroads Team, some of the Crossroads Team members and some of the Clement officials like Mayor Center, Sean Seriskey, Academy with, uh, John Stallett and some other folks who are part of the Regional Development Authority. That's the South Bend Elkhart team that will be assessing the ready grant applications. So having met with the R E A has determined that it would be ideal for Marshall County to work with a consultant to help process all these applications. That consultant will provide aid to the Crossroads Team that's submitting some of the applications, but they'll also provide aid to us individual towns and cities. How that consultant is being paid hasn't been determined yet. I'm sure they're gonna ask the reps on that community and share the cost somewhere in the town, city and county. Um, so I'll keep you in the loop on what I learned about that, uh, but all of us are gonna kind of work together on these ready grant applications. Um, last thing is the nuisance at, um, the Park Meadows Department. Um, Bill and I have been talking, uh, Bill Difans and I have been talking and um, there's still furniture by the dumpster and I've got certified letters bearing out to find that at this point, we can remove the furniture if we would like to. Kind of like the council to take a vote on that. I've tried to contact um, all three contacts I have at the rental management company to determine if they let their owners do this. Because once a month you can have furniture picked up and I cannot get any of those people to return a phone call. So I have communicated that my assumption is there's no arrangement and it's still a accumulation of trash and that's gonna be my assumption until they tell me otherwise and no one's gonna pick up the phone and tell me otherwise. So I'd like permission to have our guys move it, charge all fee for moving it and move on.
Is there a fine with that?
Yep, is there a motion, there'll be a fine?
Don't move.
Well, well, we're gonna do, uh, time, time and equipment, time and equipment. Right, the fine's already in place, but this is gonna be additional time and equipment to to, uh, go ahead and authorize Bob to go out there tomorrow and, uh, move this up in to the dumpster. Is there motion to that effect?
I saw move.
Motion by Bill Levinger and seconded by Rich, does that affect all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion nationally carry. Thank you, Jenny. That recommendation. Right.
They would want to use
Touch it.
We will let you know what that is. I have to put it in documentation before we can charge it to you.
Yeah, we're just tired as a council, I think I can speak for the council, but we're tired of this fritzing with some of these folks when they don't answer letters and don't do anything and you know, we've got ordinances and things in place and I commend, you know, Jenny for the letter writing and Jim and, you know, Chuck. Darn it, you know. We've got to get serious about this and that's the way to do it.
Uh, one other thing that in this report, I think I let you guys know a couple months back, R E M S V, which is the
Utility. You told me.
From utility.
Right.
Um, they need to put up a fiber hut on the south end of town here.
Oh.
And I asked Bob to assess whether we have space for one. Uh, I just talked to the guy on email today, David Wellen, he's gonna arrange for Bob and I to be able to go see the one in Argus because they're basically wanting to put up this smaller one in Argus. But they're asking if they could build this on our street department property, assuming. And, uh, after we go look at it with the dimensions, et cetera, probably the next council meeting will present
Okay.
what type of space they're asking for. I don't know of Argus leases, um, I'm gonna look into that tomorrow to see what type of apartment they need. Um, but they basically need the same thing, this hut would probably come into play when we go into our own fiber block via implementation. So.
No, we can get a picture of it so we can get an idea of that.
Yeah.
We can make sure the artist, but apparently it's not huge, but
necessary.
And I don't know if it's for Jenny or for Jim on the peerless utility easement with Wade McGee. Um, are those type of easements continue with the property irregardless of the ownership?
We'd want to do that, yes.
Because I suspect over time that ownership may change and I go to an association or it may something else.
Doubt requires it to be permanent.
Right.
Hey, we drawn it up, it it's forty feet off of the state line. Um, and we blocked it with ways to show.
But if some of it continues with, I suspect.
And I always recommend they get recorded, which is a requirement for a legal description and usually like mapping and so.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yeah, and that's, that's why Bob wanted him to add, add it to our actual survey map. So, and then I'll take it up to the county building, get it reported and it should be good. But I have a I'm gonna have a sample, I'm gonna use my thing with someone around here, right? Is that something I can work on, Jim?
Probably, I, I, you know, I've done those before, of course you guys.
Okay.
All right, same to you.
Uh, oh, I'm happy for you. But I gotta get you the, the actual survey. But anyway, I haven't talked before, they, Tom Collins, they were, they were good. I'm not selling that.
So Jenny mentioned they did meet with, uh, with Burke and Hal.
Yes.
And Sally.
I think what I'll do is forward you a memo that I sent to Jim because there was sort of a list of tasks we came up with that needed to get done. One of. One of which is to designate a certain area of the property as an economic development area. Which then could potentially qualify us for residential tip. That's one way to qualify. There's also, um, they are going to assess estimated costs for utilities. And they're, they're going to run their plan for utilities by Bob. Basically, they want to take utilities through the problem and not through the road. And um. So there are certain things they agree to start working on, certain things I agree I would start working on. And that's why I sent Jim and Phil to send a memo and I've also asked Phil to send. A proposal for the work deal due because a lot of it is related to the tip. The other thing is to um. Create that new tip, Rich, that would pull the Tamarack property and Wade's property out and turn the tip. So that we can get twenty five years extended on that. So um, Jim has done a deep dive on a very long memo that I. And Phil Fasonda and I have a meeting next Tuesday um to talk about what goes into that proposal for his work. Because I'm sure he was. And there may be things in there that I don't know, we have to do that Phil knows we have to do, so. Anyway, that's what we're out of it. They are quite excited about the project though and they did have sort of a handwritten map. Of where they plan on putting the housing and how the roads would work. That they want to run by Bob, but they're also going to convert that into an actual engineering site design plan. That isn't worse. So right now it's just sort of a hand drawn thing, but it looked pretty good. Single family homes, multi-family homes. And senior flats.
Wasn't he supposed to put together some numbers on the extension of utilities, not like water and sewer, not the.
Yeah, and the only reason he didn't is because he got this housing thing. Done with Wade and they want to do it all, they want to do both projects at the same time.
Anything else?
No, I must, we'll have my first.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Moving right along, Department head reports. EMS, Jeff, are you on?
Yeah, I'm on, Bill. I have nothing for you guys tonight. If you have anything for me, I'd be happy to answer anything if you have anything.
Council have anything for Jeff?
No.
Thanks, Jeff.
No, thank you.
Fire?
Yeah, I just have, I just have one thing tonight. I uh, we just uh. Got on four new guys on the department, so we had them fitted for gear. Uh, we already have, we're having them practice in the old gear, but we can't use that. And it takes about four or five months to get it, so I'd like to have a. Okay to order five sets of gear for fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. With five thousand dollars of a grant will come out of that that we had received last year.
You need four sets or five sets?
Five. Because one of the guys that we took on last year just finished his class and doesn't have gear.
Okay.
So the net's going to be nine thousand nine twenty five?
Uh, I believe that's right.
A motion to approve purchase of the gear?
No move.
I second that.
Motion made by Bill Clevinger, seconded by Sally to approve uh gear for the new fireman. And amount of, net amount of nine thousand nine hundred and twenty five dollars. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Anything else, Terry?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Wayne, are you on? Wayne's got FOP tonight, so I don't think he's on.
And Amber won't be on tonight because um master's degree class.
I finished my class, Jenny. I'm here now.
Okay. Go, go ahead, Amber.
My class finished early. Thanks, Jenny. Um. We have our Culver Park snow day this weekend. It's on Saturday, so we're really looking forward to that. Um, a lot of fun activities going on. Um, and then next council meeting, just a heads up, I do plan to present some quotes for that new basketball court resurfacing project. I'll be sure to brief you guys via EMO beforehand um with that information. And then other than that, just waiting on about twenty more renters and I'll be done with lease agreements for twenty twenty two for our peers.
Good. Thank you, Amber. Bob, are you on? Bob, are you on for utilities?
I am on. I have nothing for you, Seaton.
Moving on, boards and commissions. Uh, Chuck's not here for plan or.
No, he's out sick.
BCA, he's out sick. Uh, redevelopment? Sally?
Basically, um, we did the reconfiguration. President of the redevelopment this, this year. Bill is vice president.
Thank you.
And uh Gary Perick is remaining on as secretary.
Hopefully we'll have a fifth member for you next time.
Then we will pick out. We decided that we would wait until the fifth member was chosen before we. Pointed a facade grant coordinator.
There you go. Very much.
Yep. It couldn't be anyone.
Anyone uh. Available for tree commission? There are none. We want the clerks to report.
I just have one claim over two thousand dollars for approval.
There are motion? To prove claims over two thousand?
Considering that one, yeah, I'll make a motion.
By Sally, seconded by Bill Ham to approve claims over two thousand dollars. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
I have a couple of uniform conflicts and statements. One from Terry Wakefield, who's like, runs Suzie Q Brewery and we do. Our department's due business with her. For me, I do billing for the Southwest, they max effect the charity districts and we can visit with them. Rich West, um, he is part of the. Culver Second Century Main Street Organization, which would also be to all Culver, correct?
Yes.
I can't keep back the names. Um. And I think that's it.
I'm minded, I'm not with a, um, the Co- 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 Association.
He's part of the Culver Co- Culver Co- condo association. Owner, is part of Culver's of one. These can all be viewed online at the DLGMS website.
You need, it's just, they need to.
It's just implied.
They need to get them in.
I'm going to.
Because there's still, there's still people.
Just so people.
Me and, me and Ted, me, me and a lot of them needs to get it in.
Yeah, that's him. So the air transparency.
That's right.
As possible, it will be uploaded to the DLGMS website and provided supply to the county clerk.
And they should be in by one thirty one, correct?
Uh, there's not.
There's not a deadline?
I just tried to get it done at the first, at the beginning of the year.
I understand.
Get it out of the way.
Good.
That, um. Um. So I talked with AT&amp;T and trying to get some costs down and they are able to remove one of our landlines. And have the whole building um be on void. I don't have a specific contract for them, but I was wanting permission to go ahead and. Get that taken care of so we can start saving about a hundred dollars a month on our phone bill.
Is there a motion to approve reducing the phone bill for Karen for a hundred dollars?
So.
Or second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Rich. Um, to allow Karen to get A and T, AT&amp;T to reduce our phone bill by a hundred dollars a month. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
And then we've touched, yay. Like, um, Jeff Rowell, you're on the replace some race effort on behalf of game. I did send out an email with a catch on there. Which was actually really good and informative and it made sense to me, so. So just what the issues are there and while Culver is not going to be greatly affected. Because we don't have a lot of personal company, but I can file based on the um assessed value report. Um, maybe it, as Jeff pointed out, it would, it's going to affect the 38th, it would affect Morgan. Those happens. Um, so I would, I signed a. Draft resolution, just a general resolution that allows the tax thing, so if you are inclined to, I will reformat that to by the Culver and.
Sounds good to me, is it? Able to counsel?
Yep.
And then. Also, I'll try to supply email addresses for sending her to you. Consider sending her a note. So, and I'll upload the points tonight because I thought it just points were excellent and.
Yeah.
I'm going to. Um, and then just a reminder, the next meeting is Monday, January seventh. At six thirty, preceded by five forty five, or if I guess. That's all.
Thank you.
Attorney's report. Five forty five.
Five forty five, I remember.
She's got a lot to tell you about where she's keeping your money, so.
And it's not my bank account, so.
Um. Put that in the minutes.
You know, gladly, because. Other than my paycheck.
Uh, attorney report, I just want to follow up a little bit on the uh. Hearing that the court held on the VIP versus Culver and all this kind of thing. I know I sent all of you a. An email, kind of with a brief explanation. Um, and I uh. I'm not quite sure what, where it all fell out, but just to kind of give a quick background. Uh, there was a number of defendants that were sued. Culver was one, turned it over to our liability carrier. Attorney Gardner was representing this town of Culver. Uh, in addition, township, uh, union township, fire department and the county were also defendants. Uh, their insurance carrier, Bliss McKnight, is a different one, so they hired a different attorney. Paul, I talked to both Attorney Gardner and Attorney Smith. I knew they were both going to file motions to dismiss. Motions to dismiss on a complaint are kind of tough. Because you have to, as you picked up, you have to assume that the facts are true in the complaint. And even then, if that's the case, you know, the, the only way you get a dismiss is there's still no. Way that the plaintiff can succeed. Uh, so it's a kind of a tough standard that everybody's facing, but both attorneys thought they could do that. They, you heard about the race judicata uh argument, that's basically, you know, we've done this before, the case has ended, it's over with. And there's certainly some merit, in my opinion, to that argument. There's this governmental immunity, you know, that the town had, the fire department has, I mean. Start questioning them as to whether they should have put the fire out or not put the fire out. I mean, my God, we did. Evidently, I was a little disappointed. Uh, it was in both briefs, but there was some arguments about. The standing of all of these plaintiffs and that didn't really come out much uh in Mr. Gardner's argument. I was happy that Attorney Smith interjected at the end of the, the. The plaintiff's lawyer seems to make some case about the certification thing. And he kept saying, well, the rules should be followed. Well, the rules are that if. There's this kind of an order in place, if he doesn't want us to follow through with demolishing the building, they should be filing a motion for a stay. And they never did that. I mean, we could have torn that building down long before we did because they didn't file a motion for a stay. We didn't because I'm a little conservative and didn't want to tear it down and was worried, you know, if we tore it down and then the case was reversed on appeal. Then we'd have more issues. But when it was sustained on appeal and then especially then after the fire pretty much demolished the building anyway. It was uh, pretty easy fault at one. Uh, so I was glad that that was brought up. Uh, I. At the uh, when Smith filed his motion to dismiss, which was behind Gardner's motion. Smith thought that his motion would be heard on the same day as the, when the court set the first motion to dismiss. He didn't realize that the court didn't do that. I didn't realize that the court didn't do that. I. That I, I'm not sure whether the court, the court was the one that kind of jazzed it up, but uh. We should have, I guess, both noted that. Uh, so that's why the matter's been uh reset for uh argument on March fifteenth. I did notice that the plaintiff did not respond to uh the fire department and the township and the county's arguments, which by the way. They include some additional uh arguments above and beyond that of the town. So uh, we'll have to, we use the same link and listen in again on March fifteenth at one thirty. Uh, to see what the parties have to say of all that. I talked to Attorney Smith uh after that and we talked a little bit about the uh. Plaintiff's involved and standing and, and uh some of those kinds of things and. He indicated to me that he is going to make a little bit of point of that than was made at the first court round, so we'll. See, uh, see what happens.
And they did mention that part of their filings would be for reimbursement for fees?
I, they did bring that out, right? I mean, that's basically what they said is, geez, you know, this enough is enough, let's, let's have at it. Yeah, I would say if the judge dismisses it at this point, he's probably not going to award fees, but. If he doesn't, um, you know, the, there are other sides put on notice that. Or if it gets dismissed because of a summary judgment motion later on, you know, that that might be appropriate, so have to see. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, talk to you about it. And. Answer them as best I can. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone online or in the room present for utility shut off or ordinance violation? Hearing or seeing none? Is there anyone online for citizen input? So state your name and address and have at.
Yeah, this is Tony Sellers. Can you hear me okay?
Sure, Tony, go ahead.
Um, hey, I'm uh, I'm a little late following up, but um, obviously I submitted a special event permit. The day after your last meeting for the Winter Fest and I just wanted to follow up on that to see if. Um, obviously I want to get the banners up and stuff, but I don't have full approval yet. And just seeing what the next steps are, if there's any questions or what I can do to um, to get things moving forward.
Do we have those special event permit or request?
Uh, the Winter Fest one, it was approved, but we haven't seen. There was a alcohol permit being taken care of still. Last time I talked to Wayne, that was the case. Tony, do you know?
Did you hear that, Tony?
Yeah, so um, so we have a, so basically right now, um, Fester's Brewery in Argus has agreed to do the Beer Garden. And I followed up with them today to where they were at on a permit. I think uh, I guess, we're, I realize they have to have that for that part to happen. I think my question is, you know, whether or not I could still put up like the banners and stuff. Um, you know, just that kind of stuff. Um, if there was something saying, obviously that, you know, we have to have that permit for the, for that portion of the event to move forward. Um, I'm just worried because obviously your next meeting is for two more weeks, which is the week of Winter Fest, I do believe, or maybe the week before.
The department, we have all signed off with the exception of Wayne waiting on the permit stuff. He was okay with everything else, so we put approved Winter Fest.
Subject to?
Yeah, that, I mean, obviously Wayne's not going to let them have alcohol. Yeah, that, I mean, obviously Wayne's not gonna let them have alcohol without the permit, but if they get that taken care of, that's not a problem. So yeah, I would be okay with that.
They're okay with council to go ahead and let him put up his banners and do everything, but every, with the understanding that it's subject to Wayne's approval, the permit for the alcohol.
I would just approve the event pending the permit comes through.
I move that we approve the special event request for Winter Fest with all the components and that in order to have the beer garden, it has to meet the standards of the town for the alcohol permit.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill to approve Winter Fest special permit with the caveat that Wayne has to approve the alcohol permit for the event to be able to serve alcohol. Question? Go ahead. Is there anything on the banners that mentions alcohol?
Nope, they're strictly just, all they say is Winter Fest two thousand twenty-two with a photo of a couple kids sledding. There's no, no marketing or anything that. The only thing that does have it is our, our schedules and stuff, obviously, you know, and Wayne, he got on me a little bit. You know, the marketing goes out with the assumption and I know we need to try to get this done pre-Christmas would be better. But that stuff, it is noted on there, but obviously it does say on our schedule, like, you know, everything is susceptible to change for times, you know, check Facebook page or whatever, so. But I will keep up on that and make sure that we have our next meeting Friday and just, and stay on this guy and and hopefully it all goes through. So if not, I understand the rules.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Great, I appreciate it.
Anything else, Tony?
That is it for now.
Any other citizen input on, from online? Hearing none? Is there any citizen input in the room? You're seeing none, moving on. Council issues. Rich?
Just want to welcome Councilman Ham back to the hall.
Thank you.
Good to have you present.
Man? The same to Bill. Welcome back.
Thank you. Welcome back, Bill. And other than that, I have nothing.
Welcome back, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. And I, I have nothing. I'm just glad to be back.
That's good. Jim, you have anything else?
Nothing else. I already welcomed you.
Jenny?
Yeah, you did.
I just want to thank Jim for sponsoring me in the chance.
Aaron? There a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Rich?
Can I get that back?